All right, ready? Good. Here we go. Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021 to order. At this time, thinking about the over 400,000 that have passed due to COVID and the vaccine's on the way, but let's tonight have our moment of silence and pray that the vaccine speedy delivery happens. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Ambrose, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Brian, our city clerk, please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee. Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten President, your honor.
Thank you, Brian, our city clerk. So, good evening, everyone, again, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, welcome everyone in attendance and those who are viewing on our electronic devices. Respectfully, welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind, not only are you talking to us, but all of our fellow Davenporters and people throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in our city government and ask that your participation, please reflect the common desire that we all share to make Davenport a greater place for everyone. If you have your electronic devices, please make sure they're on silent and/or turned off so they just simply don't get in the way of when folks are talking. If you wish to address the council, please come to the podium, talk to us as a body, not any one individual, and you'll have five minutes. I think we have some feedback, don't we? Thank you, Mr. Gripp. Roger that. I have multiple electronic devices up here that sometimes I have to have help with. And especially at the public with business at the end. Again, address this. We'll treat you with respect. Please treat us with respect. And please, we all will use the accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you very much. Ms. Spiegel, our city administrator, any update this evening?
Just a reminder that we will continue fiscal '22 budget workshops this weekend with a discussion on Saturday about capital.
Capital, meaning projects, folks. So, if you're interested, talk to your aldermen or alderwomen. So, we have five public hearings this evening, four in Public Works and one in Finance. So, I'll ask Alderman Dunn to please lead the public hearings on Public Works.
Thank you, your honor. We have four public hearings this evening for Public Works. I open the first public hearing on the ordinance amending Chapter 15.44 entitled Flood Damage Prevention of the Davenport Municipal Code to adopt a new flood insurance study and flood maps and to align the ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA standards and regulations. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing for the dedication of underground utility easement on the city-owned property on two parcels located along East 53rd Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2022 state patching program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And I open the fourth and final public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the River Heritage Park seawall structure repair project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next area is Finance. We have one public hearing, and Alderman Condon will lead that. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, your honor. As I said, we have one hearing. I open the public hearing on the conveyance of the city-owned property adjacent to the Brady Street Bridge over Duck Creek State Project Number N H S N dash 461 dash 110 dash 2 R dash 82. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? All right. Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That will close the public hearing, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. The next area we have is petitions and community communications from council and the mayor. Any of my colleagues would like to discuss anything or bring something up or talk about something. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to give some recognition to the downtown partnership on a successful ice extravaganza this past weekend. So, they embraced the challenges of getting Midwesterners out of their houses in the middle of January during COVID and being able to provide what has become a staple event in the middle of our winter time. And they provided the option to drive through and see some of the ice sculptures and drive around downtown and showcase our businesses. I was only able to stop down for a brief amount of time, but the number of cars and the number of people that I saw enjoying the festivities was really encouraging and a reminder that we're slowly starting to get back to some normalcy. And I've got high hopes that we can get back to some of these events that we love and make Davenport the great place it is to live. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Alderwoman Lee.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Following up on what the mayor said about COVID-19, in Iowa, we have over 4,000 deaths, over 300,000 cases, schools without breaks or quarantine, 745. And according to the Johns Hopkins University, our positive rate is 33%. So, we are still in a serious place. Nationally, as the mayor said, we have over 400,000 known deaths. And Dr. Redfield of the CDC said that, you know, you probably ought to multiply that times 10, 10%. But one thing that's important, and this is Dr. Celine Gounder, who was a member of President Biden's COVID-19 Advisory Board, said, "I think you really need to draw upon people at the local level." It might be people's family doctors, or it'd be the local police chief, or the school superintendent, or a faith leader. And I am really glad that Davenport is stepping up, at least regarding the masks and the social distancing here in city buildings. I would like to encourage you. Last night, President Joe Biden and Vice President Harris hosted a COVID-19 memorial ceremony that was held at the reflecting pool in Washington, DC. It involved today a peaceful transfer of power. And what they did last night was they recognized and started a grieving and healing for the more than 400,000 people that have died in this country in less than one year. It's about 22 and a half minutes long, and you can find it on the Internet. It's a very moving, very powerful ceremony that was done. There were 400 lights lit along the reflecting pool to recognize the 400,000 people. I was able to find it again on radio.com/1010winds, but I really recommend you watch it. It's a very powerful, very moving ceremony that was held last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Pausing. Okay. And I just want to say thank you very much for the peaceful transition of power today. Democracy does work. So, moving on, there's no one else? All right. First area to be discussed, we have four: community development, public safety, public works, and finance. So, the first area is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead this discussion. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, your honor. I'm pleased to say that we have seven items on our community development agenda this evening. These past several months of COVID have made community development agendas pretty sparse. And knowing what's in the pipe with planning and zoning and seeing a full agenda here, again, I reiterate that there is some light at the end of this tunnel, and 2021 is looking far better than 2020 as far as development goes. Thank you, Mayor. Knocked on wood. All right. So, let us start with item number one, which is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of a vacated public right-of-way known as a portion of an east-west alley lying south of the 1500 block of West 15th Street between Wilkes Avenue and Pacific Street. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving case F 20-12, being the request of Park Place Five LLC for a final plat of Park Place Apartments, Third Edition, for a one-lot subdivision on .97 acres, more or less, located at 5601 Eastern Avenue. Before I open this up for public comment, I'm going to ask that our Corporation Council, Tom Warner, give us an update on this so that the public can come to the lectern with the latest news on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to give you this update. Yesterday, I gave you some news that wasn't great. It was that rezoning condition had been inadvertently left off, that rezoning condition would have prohibited this planned project. It was from back in 2001. Our notice went out to the neighbors, and today, one of the neighbors supplied us with a covenant that the neighborhood entered into with the developer at the time. I checked on that. That covenant was recorded, so it's in effect. And what that does is that prohibits this planned project. So, the council really has three options. One is to delete this item today. Second one would be to leave it on discussion. Two A would be if the developer then withdraws it on their own between now and Wednesday. Two B, if you will, would be it's on discussion, and I would recommend the council vote no on it as the planned project would violate this private restrictive covenant.
All right. Thank you. I think my recommendation to the council would be, let's listen to what the public has to say before anyone makes any of those three motions and a path forward. So, we'll see what the discussion is and then figure out how we would like to proceed with that. So, with that, is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and three council members. It's been about 20 years since I've been here. Ray Ambrose remembers me. I fought this zoning 20 years ago with Dow Corporation, and after two years, they won. Now, I'm going to read this to you because I spent several hours today trying to get my thoughts together. My name is John Weber. I live at 5668 Bell Court in Davenport. I'm here to talk about the rezoning of Park Place Apartments, Third Edition, at 5600 Eastern Avenue. The city received a request from Park Place Five to combine the remaining eight lots in the Park Place apartments development into one lot to build two eight-hex apartment buildings and two garage buildings. I'm here to protest this request. After living in Davenport for 30 years, my wife and I decided to have a new home built. It would have been either in Davenport or Beddendorf. We found a new development going up between 5600 block of Bell Court and 5800 block of Bell Avenue and decided to buy a new home from Beamer Builders on Bell Court on the west side of the street, as you could have a walk-off page. The home was not going to be built for at least six months, so I had plenty of time to find out what the 15 acres behind the property was zoned for. After asking the realtor about the zoning, I was told it was single-family. I also asked the developer about it, and he was told again it was single-family. I then called NASA City Planning Office about the zoning and was told single-family again. The reason I was asking about this zoning was the fact that along the south side of the Our neighbors were just as upset. We were warned not to buy a house in Davenport unless the property around what we were looking at was already developed. According to Clayton Lloyd, the Economic Development Director, the master plan for the development of city Davenport was 25 years old and needed to be upgraded. That is when I was told the 15 acres behind me was always going to be apartment, but it's not in the plan yet. They knew this was going to point where they changed the zoning on 53rd Street from agriculture to commercial for St. Ambrose and the other offices. I was told it was always going to be commercial apartments and then single-family. Now, I'm stuck with a zoning change I didn't see coming. The city did not put in writing what they had known for years. For two and a half years, I went to every single council meeting protesting this development. At times, 80 to 90% of my neighbors also attended the council meetings to protest. A lot of these neighbors had moved in the next couple of years over this zoning change. They weren't happy. After two years, the Jersey Point neighbors finally came to an agreement on the zoning. To protect the value of our homes, the last row of buildings would be single-family ranch-style dwellings. When Park Place Five started building apartments seven years ago, I went to the planned zoning department and asked if anything had changed in the zoning. I was told nothing had been changed outside of the design of the new buildings and the layout of them. The agreement for the eight ranch-style duplexes was still good. The agreement calls for eight single-family ranch-style condominiums as four buildings with a minimum of 1,400 square foot and 200 feet from the east property line for the apartment gazes as part of the plan. Why didn't the city put this condition in with the new zoning code adopted in 2019? I don't know. I do appreciate the notice that this change is being brought up at the January 20th City Council meeting, but the agreement was signed, stamped, and agreed to December 10th, 2003. I'm asking you to keep the original agreement. Now, I have, if anybody wants it, I have the agreement right here with me, if you'd like to look at it. Want me to bring it around here?
It's been provided to us.
That's a copy of the agreement on the duplexes. I fought this for two years, and I'm telling you, we'd have never bought a house there if we'd known it was going to be apartments. It's as simple as that. That's why we fought it. And it's, you know, just one of those deals. We got it. We came to an agreement, and we want to keep it that way.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name, and address your ward.
My name is Timmy Anderson with Todd Hackett Construction out of Muscatine. We've done a lot of work for this property owner, but I do live here in Davenport in Alderman Ambrose's ward. We just heard about all this this afternoon, so we're a little bit unprepared. I guess I would kind of, I don't know if there's any way. It sounds like the gentleman's not interested in any kind of talking, so.
This is all we want, a ranch-style duplex. Otherwise, not.
Lee, sir, please talk to the council and no discussion with the
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Thank you very much.
The owner was kind of surprised. He wasn't aware of this agreement either. So, I guess I'd kind of like to just, if things could be held, so he could kind of, or we could do some research, but again, we're kind of caught off guard. Bruce Berger called me late in the afternoon and told me about this. So, we're trying to figure out what our options are now for the property. It sounds like they're fairly limited. I don't know if you can wait or have to take action tonight, but we'd just kind of like to wait and see. So, thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? All right. We'll go to council, and this is Alderwoman Lee. Oh, yeah, so we're going to make mention of the letters.
So, yes, because of the, I mean, I have two that I could read, and they're pretty long, but in lieu of the corporate council's advice, if you guys decide to carry on, I'll be happy to read them next time. But, I mean, I think I know what we're going to do here, so you guys are going to do. So, if it's okay, I have them.
I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yep. I'll tell you who they are: Jeff Rogan and Ted and Francie King.
And I have one from John Rogers. You said Frank Corin. That's Ted. Yeah. Okay. So, there's three.
Okay. Would you like first comment, Alderwoman Lee? This is your board.
I think the covenant that was put into place, it was recorded in 2003, and this covenant is good for 20 years. So, you've got until 2023 before this expires. It's very clear on what is legally allowable on the site, and it's been filed with the county recorder. So, it's still in place. I would like to hear from others on the council, but I definitely, if this goes on to next week, which is when the vote would actually be made, I would definitely vote no, as advised by corporate counsel. Thank you.
Alderman Jobchin?
Unless there's some other conversation that my fellow council members like to have, I'd like to make a motion to delete this item.
I'd like to ask some questions first, if I could.
Go for it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So, Tom, I'd like you to just explain procedurally the consequences of the different options you laid out.
Yeah. So, if it's deleted tonight, obviously, it's done. It's not on the agenda for next week. If it goes on to the agenda for next week, the owner can always withdraw this replat between now and Wednesday. Otherwise, it will appear on your agenda next week. And again, I would recommend voting no on that because it would violate this, the planned project would violate this restrictive covenant. This gives the developer, well, the option of waiting a week gives them a little bit of time to think about what they want to do. Right now, it's plotted to do the duplex-style buildings per the covenant. I know there's several other places in Davenport where actually builders are trying to build those, and they can't get that zoning through. So, it's not an invaluable thing to have.
Okay. So, if it is deleted, the developer could still develop something on that land that is not, that doesn't go against that covenant. Is that correct?
Correct. Laura Berkeley, I think, has more information on exactly what can happen on that.
Probably worth hearing, Laura, if you'd like to. I just want to make sure that everybody knows if they cast a vote, what their vote means and what it means procedurally.
Hi. Laura Berkeley, Development Planning Administrator. So, they would still be able to do a single-family semi-detached, which is basically a duplex with a shared wall. So, they would be able to do a total of four of those buildings for a total of eight units. I think. No, sorry. Eight, eight of those buildings. But it's a total of eight units, but the lots each have one unit on them.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So, if we waited a week and instead of deleting it, we went to a vote and voted against it, they would, voted it down, the developer would be able to still build anything that was not, that did not go against those covenants, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, he's not losing an ability to build on his land for a year. But if it was voted down, it would be another year before he could bring this particular thing to the council, or this is not a rezoning, so that doesn't apply?
Correct. Yeah. That's usually with a rezoning.
Okay. And so, really, the timeline is based on, is it the, when the lease, or when the covenant was recorded? Because there's two dates in the document.
Yes. It goes by, for purposes of holding later parties to the covenant, it goes by the recording date. We're a record notice state is the term that's used for that.
Okay.
And I would like to add on to something, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Alderwoman Lee mentioned about it expiring in the next couple of years. I would encourage the neighbors, if they want to keep that in place, to talk to a lawyer about refiling it. There's a process where you can refile it so it lasts for another period of time. Equal amount.
Good. Before I turn it back over to Alderman Jobchin, is there anyone on the council who has any questions about those procedural items we just discussed? All right. From my perspective, I agree with you. It doesn't sound like the developer loses anything. It doesn't sound like the developer is going to be able to move forward with this development according to that covenant, and I see no reason for us to continue to entertain it. Alderman Jobchin, your motion, please.
Can I make a motion to delete this item from the agenda?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The item has been deleted. Please make note of that, Alderwoman Lee. All right. We will move to item number three, which is a resolution approving amended assistance programs through the state COVID CDBG-CV application process to assist with the impact of the pandemic on Davenport residents. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have someone from staff that could explain how this process will play out and what the public should do.
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development Director. So, this does a few things administratively. One of the things that it does is it adds to that there was a different dollar amount that the state made free for some communities. So, there's a little bit of additional funding that can be used for what they call program delivery or admin. And that doesn't impact the public necessarily, but it is something that helps make those dollars go further. So, we needed to change the, amend that plan at the council level to be able to do that. And then it also broadens up some of the other uses of the dollars to be a bit more flexible. From the public standpoint, really, we're about ready to launch. We've been waiting for some time to be able to get all this through HUD and then through state procedures across the different communities. We're about there. So, this is kind of the last piece. We'll be able to sign some agreements with some of our local providers. And so, I would anticipate within, unless the state has any challenges with anything, we're sending them, within a few weeks, we should be able to get these programs up and running. So, stay tuned.
So, Bruce, for the public, how's it supposed to work for someone in need?
So, there's a few different programs that are at play. One is what we'll kind of couch under the hotel voucher heading. And so, if someone has been displaced from their rental unit for inability to pay due to COVID and are currently homeless, with restrictions on shelters and congregant sheltering, this is the answer. So, the dollars from FEMA and from the state ESG program are there to put folks up in hotel units. This funding would be added to that, and to the extent that we can help a few more people, A, that's a good thing, but this also broadens it to be able to help with food because, as you might imagine, people that are living in hotels have a difficult time preparing food. So, it's things like that, that this flexibility that you're approving next week would build into. And those people can contact any one of three providers: Salvation Army, Humility and Mary, and Family Resources, depending upon their needs. So, that's what that program's about. The other two programs are kind of being rolled together. It's a tenant resiliency and a mortgage resiliency program. And so, those are for folks who, either from a rental standpoint, are unable to pay their rent, are having some challenges with that, and/or having challenges paying their mortgage. And so, these two programs, you'd either work with your lender, you work with your landlord, and collectively, there'll be an application process. Salvation Army is actually, in addition to the homeless voucher program, will be helping to administer that program. So, there'll be marketing information about all of that when we roll out the program. So, and we'll have some of that information on our website, too.
So, this is all going to be administered through nonprofits?
Correct.
Thanks, Bruce.
If you.
Seeing no other comments? You, I'm sorry. Mayor.
Thanks, I just want to say thanks to Bruce and his staff. And that was good. We're having a little fun today. See, humor. Yep. Now I forget what I say. No, I want to say thanks to the staff and working with the state and my conversations with our state folks and our nonprofits around here. We have been pushing this hard and working this hard for many months now. And our staff has been pushing and working this hard to make sure that we understand during COVID that people need a lot of assistance, whether it's rental, mortgage, or others. And we've been, had a lot of conversation with the Salvation Army and et cetera. And I'm very appreciative of the work and, quite frankly, the sincerity of everybody taking this and trying to assist. And here we go, Davenport leading the way and having the perseverance to stay with this and keep with the state and working with them to get these benefits to our citizens. Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. With that, we will move on to item number four, a resolution declaring Gaines Street, south of the Canadian Pacific tracks in front of Modern Woodman Park, be also known as Royals Way in honor of our local baseball team's affiliation with the Kansas City Royals. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? From the council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, six months ago, the community was fearful we were going to lose professional baseball after 90 years. Thankfully, our team, our studentum, has been one of those chosen teams. You know, we look back six months. We're dealing with civil unrest. The Chinese virus, the government's shutdown of our communities, our states. We came off of a record flood. We're trying to recoup from that. And the whole time, the owner of our professional baseball team has stayed very solid, very supportive, very positive about our stadium. See, I was a little surprised last week when I found out that the mayor and the city administrator were in the process of trying to renegotiate the team's long-term lease. I think we should be celebrating our championship baseball team and the owner and our world-class stadium. I know I might be one of the few people in the city council that feel that way, but I was very disappointed in that this was happening. You know, I was even more disappointed. I wasn't brought into that discussion. So, you know, hopefully, the city doesn't renegotiate our way out of professional baseball again and we're able to keep a championship professional baseball team, our River Bandits, in our world-class baseball stadium, the economic engine of many, many great events in our downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Doorman?
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. And I will say, there is nothing more that I love than in the summer drinking a beer on our world-class riverfront, watching the River Bandits. And it is something I nor anyone else in the city ever would want to see leave. And I can't think of any better way to celebrate our newfound team affiliate, the Kansas City Royals, by honorary renaming this street, this subsection of the street, Royals Way, in their honor. And hopefully, one day, when we can all get together and right around baseball kickoff time, it would be a great opportunity to have a unrevealing ceremony where we, you know, drop the banner, show the new sign we have, and can have one big party that leads right into a baseball game. So I'm excited for this, excited for baseball in the Quad Cities to hopefully happen again this year, and looking forward to our continued partnership with Dave Heller, the River Bandits, and everyone else with minor league baseball.
Mayor Matson?
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. So to all of everyone's points, whatever words you use, renegotiation or conversation, the whole point is to keep the River Bandits here. And your misunderstanding of what is going on is unfortunate. But then the discussions with Major League Baseball and Mr. Heller is, the whole point is to keep them here and to ensure we have a contract. And the River Bandits and Dave Heller is the owner, is the baseball team, and the Royals are that affiliate. And that's the whole point of the discussion. And the discussions are moving in that direction so that we ensure we have baseball. There is absolutely no discussion about getting rid of baseball. And if you're saying that, you're misinformed. And I think that's shameful for you to say that.
Yeah. I've gotten this information from administration, and I got the information from the owner of the team. So someone's being less than honest.
Mr. Ambrose, it's not your turn to speak.
Would you like to speak, Alderman Ambrose? Okay. Seeing no one else, I just wanted to thank Alderman Peacock and Alderman Jobin. And I know Alderman Doorman had been working on this with Mr. Heller and Main Street Baseball. I think this is a great way to commemorate the new partnership between the Kansas City Royals and Main Street Baseball and the city of Davenport. And looking forward to, you know, guaranteed 10 years of baseball on our riverfront with the Kansas City Royals in Modern Woodman Park. Kansas City Royals are a very good regional Major League Baseball team. They send a lot of talented players through their system. And we were lucky to get that affiliation, and we're looking forward to it. And again, this is a great way to celebrate the beginning of that relationship. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to item number five, which is a resolution approving the proposed Section 18 disposition plan for the city's 42 scattered-site public housing units. Is there anyone from, actually, before I call for comments from the public, I want to bring Bruce Berger up to give a brief explanation and a short presentation on this.
I'm Community and Economic Development. So I thought I'd recap a little bit on, point that way, right? The, where we've been with this. So what's in front of you is a disposition plan. What that basically means is these 42 units that we have in Davenport scattered around town are part of HUD's public housing inventory. They're part of public housing property that goes through that program. And so in disposing of them, the idea is that we're proposing in our plan to remove them from that inventory. So there's a whole process that HUD has us go through. We've been going down that path a bit. So what's before you tonight is another key step in that. Where we've been, though, 12, 18 months ago or so, HUD came to us talking about some of the additional flexibilities that have been built in at the HUD level, and basically commenting that, you know, as a small PHA, Public Housing Authority, which they define as fewer than 50 units, which is us, it's tough to sustain that financially. So they were coming to us with wanting to brainstorm about how we might maybe make some changes or consider some of the different strategies that might be in place to make it better for our community and just in general for HUD as well. In addition, while we were going through that, just acknowledging again that, you know, being a residential property manager is not something that's in our core mission as a city. And yet, balancing with that, the need to retain affordable units. We continue to have a need for affordable units. And so, you know, we wouldn't want to lose that. So then in February, we hired a national broker. We coupled with that the Heritage Property. And so the thought was perhaps that Heritage Property is a project-based Section 8 with the public housing scattered site units, that we could find a buyer that would perhaps buy those. By summer, it was evident that those two assets are separated, should be separated. They're different buyer classes. They're treated differently by HUD as well. And so we moved into the fall soliciting interest from tenants and from local nonprofits. So the tenant idea was, is there anybody amongst those 42 tenants who might become, want to become a homeowner and be able to? And then, again, back to wanting to retain affordable units, we wanted to talk first with our local affordable housing nonprofits. What came forward, so in terms of updates, this, as of the end of October, beginning of November, we received a letter of intent from, and it was from, it was a single letter that they all came together on, which is a great sign. But we had three local nonprofits come forward. Ecumenical Housing, Vera French Housing, and Habitat for Humanity. You probably know most of that. I can, you know, we can talk later about some of those things. But Ecumenical Housing does a lot of master leasing, so that may be the least known. But they actually manage a number of units around, and they partner with groups like Humility, with Vera French, with a number of nonprofits around. Vera French Housing, obviously affiliated with Vera French. They own and manage a number of units around the Quad Cities. And then Habitat for Humanity might be a little bit of a nuance for you. So they technically, you know, take vacant lots, work with a family to qualify them. And then they, through sweat equity and volunteers and donations, build a new house and sell it to that family. So we'll come back to Humility Housing here in a bit. So there's our properties. We have two six-unit buildings, 11 duplexes, and eight single-family houses. All would remain affordable under the plan once we receive the plan from those nonprofits. And we actually, by the way, had one or two tenants that do have an interest in becoming homeowners. So collectively, all of the units, we're expecting that would remain affordable. In particular, EHDG and Vera French Housing would retain the units as is and would make those units available to the existing tenants. And I'll come back to how that process will work. Habitat, for their part, right now is hoping to acquire two to three single-family houses for homeownership. We have not yet begun negotiating with tenants or nonprofits. We have their general plan. And so the idea was to get this disposition idea approved and to HUD. And then we would begin, probably in February, with a negotiation process. So what would this mean for tenants? Tenants would each receive a voucher, which would cover its Section 8, essentially, a voucher, which gives them mobility. It will have a very similar rent structure. HUD usually bases that upon what they can afford to pay. So there won't be much of a change, depending on if they decide to move out. A tenant can choose to leave. Their new unit might cost a little more. And if so, that could, you know, there's utility allowances and things. But basically, they're going to pay the same amount in rent as they currently do. So we've already heard from some tenants that that's a positive. It might allow them to move closer to family. They might be able to move to even a different part of the country if there's a job available. So it actually gives them more flexibility than public housing. And the benefit of these nonprofit groups, especially the two I've mentioned, is they can choose to remain in the unit and use that voucher at the same unit. So it essentially would have very little impact then for, in those cases. So I want to spend just one quick second on Habitat. So that's a little bit different model. Habitat, again, looking to acquire two to three. All of the nonprofits are going to be looking at grants and financing and what they could afford in the negotiation. But let's say that Habitat might acquire two of the eight single-family houses. So two of the 40 units, 42 units, could become homeowner units, could become, you know, it could be sold to a home buyer. Tenants who live there would have the opportunity to apply for Habitat for financing. So just like is available now, someone could maybe qualify. However, if a tenant doesn't wish to pursue homeownership, it's not for everyone. It may not be for the tenants that are living there. They would be displaced. So I just want that to be clear. It's a lower number than we expected, but it is possible that, in this example, perhaps two of the 42 tenants may actually need to take their voucher and relocation assistance to find other housing. So what does the relocation assistance look like? We're proposing to HUD that, in addition to the voucher tenants are receiving, tenants would then have 120 days to decide if they want to remain in the unit or not. Everybody would be eligible for relocation assistance. If they choose to leave in that time period, they can, they can get up to $1,600 in terms of security deposit on a new unit, application fees and all those things. They can also get up to $2,000 in assistance with packing up and moving. And so, and there's some other things that go in there, too. But that gives you a general idea that, in addition to paying for their rent in a similar manner, they actually, hopefully, would have very little out-of-pocket in moving, which is the goal we were searching for. Again, don't anticipate a lot of folks will have to do this, maybe two out of 42. But in the event that that's the way it works out, there is a pretty decent relocation assistance package, so. So last slide I have for you is timeline. If you were to prove next week, HUD has 90 days from receipt of the application. So let's say it takes until April. They may need some more information. In the meantime, staff is going to begin discussing with the potential buyers, the three nonprofits and one or two of the tenants that had indicated an interest. If everything would go well, we would anticipate, maybe in that May-June time period, coming back before you with finalized offers from the nonprofits and perhaps one or two of the tenants. We need to go through as legally, we need to go through public hearing and approval of the real estate end of the deal. So you're not approving sale to anybody in this process. This is just the plan. And then, in theory, if all of that would happen, we're anticipating, once the vouchers are issued, that maybe some of those sales could start to happen as soon as this summer. So it may take longer. We'll be able to fill you in more as we move through the process. So that's what I had quick, I guess. Any questions? That's a quick, sorry.
I think what I'd like to do is allow the public to speak, and then at the council, ask questions for you, bring you back up. At this time, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to the council. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bruce, great job. This looks like it's going to be a win for the nonprofits and a win for the city. So, you know, hopefully, we continue putting this together and it's successful.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yes, Bruce, I had one question. And I read all of the materials today, and I think it skipped my mind. What happens, so the single, we know the nonprofits are interested, or some are interested in the duplexes and the apartments, but Habitat's interested in several of single-family homes. What happens with the other single-family homes?
Good question, yeah, I should cover it, too. So EHDG and Vera French anticipate acquiring most of the properties. I believe from their letter of intent, Vera French seems more interested in the sixplexes and maybe some of the duplexes. And then what EHDG has said is, in light of homeowner interest, in light of Habitat's interest, they'll take whatever is left. So that's part of the finalizing, we'll try to figure out. Yeah.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Chair. Bruce? First of all, I would like to thank you and corporate counsel. You've done a really good job taking care of the people and following the process at the same time. I have nearly half the units and nearly half the properties in Athuard. So I really appreciate you working with me and with everyone on bringing this to a win-win. Could you please clarify for if one or two people purchase a duplex themselves, the tenants? If it's sold at under-market value, could you please explain what happens to the other duplex that the tenant themselves are not living in?
Sure. And a couple of variables, I guess, could happen. But probably the most likely scenario is if it's sold under appraised value, HUD will require that it remain affordable for a 30-year period. So there'll be a deed restriction placed on the property. And so the owner, as a tenant of, would qualify already. And presumably, with the tenant provisions we have set up, that new tenant, the existing tenant will have a new voucher, and they could choose to stay there if the new property owner wanted them to remain. So in that case, both units are affordable. If the tenant were to choose to leave, because they will have a voucher, that deed restriction will still prevail and maintain affordability. So that's why we'd say, I mean, there could be a chance. There are no guarantees out there. But I think it's very likely that those 42 units will remain affordable for years to come. So that's, and that was part of our goal when we started this.
So the only possibility that something could go private and then ultimately be. So the only possibility that something could go private and then ultimately go into the private market would be under the Habitat for Humanity?
Well, and even in that case, and again, haven't negotiated yet, so I'm trying to negotiate against ourselves, but in theory, I would anticipate Habitat, we likely would end up approving a sale with your blessing and all at below-market rate to preserve affordability anyway, so. So if we sell it to Habitat for below appraised value, then it would have a 30-year requirement as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, Bruce, I'm sorry, I keep pushing the wrong button. One other question. So to that point, say, the duplex, if that person then sold it, then the affordability clause would continue. In other words, if they sold it on.
Yep, yep. The deed restriction, yep.
All right. I don't have any questions for you, Bruce. We've already discussed this. I did want to add some comments before we move on to the next item. So first off, I'd like to recognize Alderwoman Lee, who has really taken, taken great care and concern with the scattered sites and has been working very closely with staff to ensure that the folks who live in these scattered sites aren't displaced through this action. And then, okay. Alderwoman Dickman, I'll call on you next after I finish my comments. I didn't see you on my list. Okay. When we started this process, when the city staff approached the council about looking at divesting of the public housing assets, the city council's been very clear in a couple of things. Number one is, we maintain the amount of affordable housing that we currently have. And number two is that we don't displace folks from their homes, especially if they don't want to be. And my feeling in this entire process has been that our staff has taken great care to make sure that those two things happen. And I do appreciate the effort. I appreciate my colleagues on the council being insistent of it, but it's not like there's been pushback from our staff. Our staff has been engaged and willing and moving in that direction because it's the right thing to do. So I just wanted to make those recognitions, and now I'll call on my colleague, Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Alderman. Pretty much the same sentiments, really especially wanted to thank the nonprofits for really stepping up and stepping forward as soon as this became a thing that we were talking about. And just so much gratitude towards my fellow council members and the staff, because we wanted to make this something that was beneficial, like everyone said. And it looks like it's actually going to be able to work out that way. And I don't know if the public gets to see all the blood, sweat, and tears that goes into making that happen, but it's a lot. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for comments from the council. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, which is a motion approving the Citizens' Advisory Committee's recommendations for the reprogramming of the unspent and unobligated community development block grant funds from CDBG year 45, ending June 30, 2020. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Item number seven is a motion accepting Downtown Davenport Partnership's master plan, Downtown Davenport 2030, a resilient city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item?
Sure.
Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Bill Handel, 1514 West High in Davenport, Fourth Ward, also Nashville, Tennessee. And I don't know what it's meant by accepting it. Perhaps it's just you're receiving it, or are you approving it? I don't know, but I'll, I'll go by the assumption, perhaps it's almost like an approval. And I've had the opportunity to look through the plan, and I have to commend the Downtown Partnership for putting it together. I think they've done a good job of finding the right person, the right firm to do the work. But it's almost as if, you've got to realize the limitations of this. It's, they've had 25 interviews, and there are 25 people on the steering commission, so it could be the steering committee are the only people that actually had a chance to weigh in on this. And it's 100,000 people that this is all impacting, because Downtown is not just the people that run the businesses, it's also the citizens, as you know. But four items that I wanted to talk about. One is, that are in that report is the one ways, converting them to two ways. And they're stopping it at Marquette Street. And I think if the one ways are disadvantageous for people living on it east of Gaines, or Marquette, it's, the same thing goes for people west of it. I think things can be done to make it very less expensive if they play their cards right, and it'd be a much better street to live on, Third and Fourth, than it currently is. Number two is, I kind of got to go through this fast, is what's called the YMCA site. And I think, I think we're, it's a historic site. It's an architecturally interesting building. It's a well-built building, and I think we can't rely, apparently, on our city's historic preservation group to preserve it. And I think we need to look at what could be done to preserve it. And putting a bus terminal three blocks west of where it is, it's an undue hardship of people that are using the buses. I don't think that ought to be accepted. The last, the third one is the transportation building, it kind of ties in with that. It's really our only full block that has direct access to, almost to the river, and it's pushing, it has the potential of having other uses other than low-rise or even a high-rise apartment complex or condos or office space. But the last one I want to talk about in the report is the impact that it shows on our riverfront. And I know it's considered schematic, but here's what we have. We have an amorphous, we'll hear this pink blob running across Leclerc Park, which is our most prized park. And they're talking about being protected and playful. Well, it's playful in plan, but it isn't playful in its effect. If that ends up being a 10- or 15-foot-high earthen berm running right into Peterson Pavilion, people of Davenport are not going to stand for that. And so if by accepting this plan, you're approving it in any way, these, at least these issues, I'd like to have brought into more public consciousness. Because one of the downsides of this type of thing, where you have an outside group putting together a report, you don't go through the type of public review that was done with the River Vision in 2004 or 2014, because it's like an Enron, away from accountability. And something this important, I don't think the council ought to stand for it. Our annual budget's a quarter billion dollars, and if we can't afford $100,000 every 10 years for a downtown plan that has proper public input, I don't think we're the kind of great city we purport to be. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Deo Gilmore. I live in the Sixth Ward, and I approve this message. No, aren't you glad this over with? I guess, I have two things. One, I would like this to be moved to the discussion agenda. And the other thing is, I would like Mr. Carter to give me a copy of the Downtown Davenport Partnership master plan, so I can be prepared to say whatever I want to say next week. So, thank you.
Kyle Carter, Executive Director for Downtown Davenport Partnership, Fifth Ward, citizen. And so, first of all, I just want to say thank you. We've been working on this for over a year and a half. There's actually been an enormous amount of public input, especially during COVID, the best we could. We had over 500 respondents to our online forum. We've had dozens of focus groups, and we've had, we've had this out in the public format in one way or another for a very long time. We realized that, you know, this was, this started over a year and a half ago, and I'd like to thank Cory and her staff for reaching out and helping give us the blessing to guide this process, something that we took very seriously. We've met with all of the aldermen individually. We've had a work session, a public work session about this. And we've had such great feedback from both the public and the city staff and our many stakeholders that put this together. So mostly just wanted to show our appreciation for this whole process. We understand that, you know, this is a visionary plan, something that we all have to work together and play different roles to achieve. Each things and plans of this nature come to be over the course of many further decisions down the line, and that this is really a guiding, a guiding map for us to achieve toward. But we are well aware that there are many things in here that will take further discussion, further votes, further, further public input. But we can all agree that we need a roadmap, and that's what we set out to do. We think that we did a fine job of that with the folks at WXY, who helped lead this program with us. So thank you again to city staff and all of our stakeholders and public who had put so much time and effort into this. And it is available on the downtowndavenport.com website. It's on the city's website as well. We have the summary, the full plan, all of the different background studies that went into the economics and streets, conversations. It's all available, has been for a while, but if, if anybody wants to go to downtowndavenport.com, they can find 100% of the documentation that the council has in front of them as well today. So thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we will move to council comments. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman. Yeah, I want to thank Kyle Carter specifically for leading a very public process. I was, you know, part of the group that was one of the stakeholders, one of the people that sat, but certainly not involved with all the very wide things that were done for this project. And, you know, you know, in realizing that Downtown hadn't had a plan for many years, I really have to applaud the Downtown Davenport's leadership in bringing this forth and making this a reality, but including many, many different kinds of stakeholders, you know, in this process as well. Any, any master plan, any strategic plan is a roadmap, as Kyle Carter says. It isn't, every single thing is not the way it becomes, but it, we have to have that vision. And I think this does a great job. So I really want to, I've been, I was very impressed with the process. I was very impressed with how many people were engaged throughout this process. And it's really your leadership, Kyle, it's really Kyle's leadership. So I was really privileged to be a part of this, and thank you very much.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Alderman. I just want to make sure that it's clear that what we're voting on tonight is that we accept the plan. We're not voting on any particular projects. The plan provides, like Alderwoman McGinnis said, a roadmap. It gives us ideas to consider for capital improvement projects moving down in the future within a context of the entire Downtown Davenport. So we're accepting the plan, but projects will be considered as they are brought up in CIP and other processes in the budgeting. If I've said anything that needs further clarification on that? Is someone from staff, is that? Oh, okay. Mr. Carter says okay. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Alderman Condon?
I had a chance to be involved in the process, and I just wanted to tell the people leaving the process that I think they did a great job, and I applaud you. There's a lot of studies that you can be involved in as you hire an outside firm, and you sometimes have to grit your teeth as you feel whether or not they're hitting the mark. But I feel like these people really waded into our community and understood our downtown. And a couple of things that they did that I appreciate, they went out of their way to not step on the toes of other major studies and plans that we've, that we've brought forth before. This really had a focus more on what an individual's experience is when they're in the downtown on their feet, or at least those are the things that I really appreciated. And they identified a low, identified a lot of low-hanging fruit, which is important. There's a lot of things that we could do in the immediate future that would make a visitor's experience in the downtown area dramatically different. And those are some of the things that I am excited about. And then, yeah, it did a spire as well, appreciating that there's both public and private interests and stakeholders in the downtown. It did identify some areas that we should allow ourselves to dream big on. So again, I just want to say, good job. I appreciated the process, and I'm excited to, to get an opportunity to be so lucky as to implement some of this great stuff. Thanks.
Mayor Mattson?
Thank you, Alderman. I, too, want to thank Mr. Carter and the Downtown Partnership and our staff for working together. I was appreciative of bringing us in early, talking with us about your thoughts and how you can adapt and move, because I've been on the council a long time, and we talk about pieces of Davenport a lot. We talk about the Ground Transportation Center, the old YMCA, lots of pieces and individual conversations. And this, this put together the puzzle, in my opinion. It was talked with, through the public. It connects the downtown with a vision. And as Alderwoman Lee said, this is still council's discussion on how we implement and piece together, but working, as I've seen with the last year, with our friends down here, of course, we can work on these pieces and connect this puzzle. And I appreciate a group that the Downtown Partnership brought together to take these conversations and put them together, and now we have a comprehensive plan moving forward instead of talking about individuals. So thank you to everybody, both our staff, the citizens, the alderfolks that worked on this, and Mr. Carter and your folks that worked on this, to bring this together and get it to council so we can accept your plan finally, because it has been a long time coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this plan's been before the council in a few different forums over the last year, and I've expressed my support of it, and I participated in the making of this plan, and I was happy to do so. But I kind of want to comment about the progress we've made, and I think it's important to recognize where we started and where we've been with this revitalization of our downtown. Cities are built out in decades, and the last two decades have been really good for our downtown area. There's a gentleman who I talked to quite a bit, who's been around Davenport a long time, and he kind of jokingly said last year, "Oh, another downtown plan? Why do they need that?" Well, because we need a roadmap, and we need to dream, and we need to look at where we're, where we've been in the last 10 years, and where we're going in the next 10. And this is that roadmap, and I'm happy to support it. But I think back two decades ago, to 2001 now. I was a senior in high school at Davenport Central, and I remember writing some reports on the future revitalization of downtown that was coming and was about to happen in the coming years. And then, while I was in college, I got to see that as I went to St. Ambrose, played baseball there, got to come down and practice at Modern Woodman Park and watch the revitalization happen downtown. In 2010, we started to become a neighborhood in our downtown, and former alderman-at-large, Jason Gordon, always likes to point out that when he was a teenager, he never would have thought that two aldermen-at-large would reside in our downtown. And I always remind him, and a third one who wishes he could, or did. So I wish, one day I will, but for now, I don't, so. But it's true. The downtown has changed. It's become a neighborhood. I think, I think we announced that 12 different businesses were opening in our downtown in the middle of a pandemic. In place, when other places are struggling to keep and maintain businesses, our downtown specifically is continuing to thrive. And I made mention of it earlier in this agenda, things are looking very good in 2021. There's things in the pipeline. There's things in the pipeline, so I'm happy to support this, I'm looking forward to the next 10 years, and it is a plan, it is a roadmap. If 40% of what is in this plan came to fruition, it would be a great success, and I look forward to helping make that happen with the support of our downtown partnership. Alderwoman Lee, would you please set this very long agenda that we are happy to have?
Thank you, Chair. It is nice to have something to talk about under community development, it is nice. So yes, I move to place item number two, actually delete it, from the agenda, to place items five and six on the discussion agenda, and place one, three, four, no, five and seven on the discussion agenda, and place one, three, four, and six on the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That concludes our community development agenda this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Lee. The next and second area is public safety. Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobjen will lead the discussion. Alderman Ambrose, please.
Thank you, Honor. We've got a pretty simple agenda, we're just renewing some liquor licenses, we don't talk about that, but if you want to know more about it, it's all on our social media platforms. So I'd ask Alderman Jobjen to set the agenda.
Since I don't have to get out an abacus to figure out this motion, I just make a motion to place this one item on the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Honor.
You're done? Okay, good. Yes, thank you very much, public safety, because that's what we focus on here. I just used an abacus the other day, it's amazing. So then, I didn't know what to do with it, but I, so the third area, there's some more humor for you. The third area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will lead the discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This might take a little longer than public safety, but we'll try to get through it. We have 10 items this evening. The first item is the first consideration of an ordinance limiting Chapter 15.44 entitled Flood Damage Prevention of the Davenport Municipal Code to Adopt a New Flood Insurance Study and Flood Maps and to Align the Ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and FEMA Standards and Regulations. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and pavement associated with Prairie Heights Third Edition site improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting the storm sewer and pavement associated with the Jersey Farms Commercial Park Fourth Edition site improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and pavement associated with the Eastern Avenue Farms Fifth Edition site improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the 53rd Street Reconstruction and Widening Phase II Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution dedicating an underground utility easement on city-owned property on two parcels located along 53rd Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the Elm Street Bridge Replacement Over Canadian Pacific Railroad to Brand Construction Company of Mylan, Illinois as an amount And before I ask for any public or council comment, can we have our city engineer, Brian Shad, give us a little explanation of how these projects go out for bid and kind of run us through that process, if you would please, if you're here?
Public Works Brian Shad. This one with the funding source is a little bit different than our normal city projects, where we normally bid that out through our website. This project was actually bid through the Iowa DOT and through their BidX website. Their rules are a little bit different than ours as well, that only contractors that can be qualified can bid on and win projects. We had seven qualified bidders look at the plan list, we only received two bids out of those seven, and that's what we had before the council today.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel, let's start with Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Yes, if someone could go over, I don't know if that would be Nicole, the whole history of the Canadian Pacific dollars and the two bridges, I know we're talking about this bridge, but I think just for the public it might be, so there, because there are some questions, well, what about the, you know, that comes up whenever this is mentioned, of course, so if you could explain that a little bit and where the dollars are coming from for this project.
Sure, so as you all, Nicole, we're listening, Public Works, as you all recall, several years ago, during our normal bridge inspection process, we identified both this bridge and the 13th Street Bridge as substandard. However, the ownership of both of these bridges was with Canadian Pacific Railway, as in the past, when a bridge was over the railroad, the railroad owned the bridge, that old practice has been discontinued. So Canadians Pacific has actively been trying to get rid of those kinds of bridges that don't really serve any purpose to the railroad. So in lieu of replacing the bridges, the railroad did offer to basically give the bridges to the city with a subsidy as seed money to get the bridges repaired. So the city accepted $1.9 million towards the two bridges. In addition, we applied for the State of Iowa Bridge Replacement Program, which was an additional $1 million. So this fund started with $2.9 million of essentially non-city funds, so that's what's being used to fund this particular project. The amount that has already come out is for the actual design of the bridge, so that's already been expended. So that, as Alderman McGinnis mentioned, doesn't really leave any funds for the 13th Street Bridge at this time, but we've had several conversations with Alderman and Dorman. We would like to make that a conversation with that neighborhood because the detour route for that bridge is much shorter and impacts many less people as this Elm Street Bridge did. So hopefully that kind of covers what you were looking for.
We're also looking at potential other ways to, different things to do with 13th Street.
Correct, yeah, we would like to really get the public's input on how they use it, because, you know, there's a difference if it prefers to be pedestrian, a more of a low-mileage bridge, a narrower bridge, there's many more options there than we really had with Elm Street.
Thank you, yes, this Elm Street Bridge, I think it's hard to stress how important it truly is to the really entire east side of Davenport, and what it's done to traffic patterns and the neighbors around there of more of a pain in order to get around town, which is a problem as is, now increased traffic on some other roads that didn't always have it. So if you remember last cycle, we approved a stop sign down at Eastern and Perford Boulevard, and that, working with our traffic engineer and our city engineers, they both told me that the increased traffic load they are seeing in these intersections is because this Elm Street Bridge is closed. And not to mention also that Elm Street is one of our only connectors because of the railroad and because of Locust that connects Jersey Ridge to Eastern, where right off of Eastern on Rush Home is where our major hospital is for the area. So Elm Street, it is a very, very vital road in the east side, and I'm, it's sad to see that it took this long and some maybe previous problems of not addressing the bridge issues previously with Canadian Pacific, but it's moving forward now, and I'm glad that we're able to get to this point, and hopefully soon we'll have this major thoroughfare back open on the east side of Davenport. And thanks to Clay, Brian, everyone else at Public Works, Nicole, and everyone I know that I'm missing right now that helped with this project, that we have had many conversations, and I know we will have many more conversations before this bridge is built with the neighbors during construction season, and so I appreciate it, and I'm glad we're able to be at this point now to vote forward on it, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2022 state patching program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the River Heritage Park Seawall Structure Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, number 10 is a motion accepting work completed under the 76th Street and Vine Street Court Drainage Improvement Project to Five Cities Construction Company of Cove Valley, Illinois as an amount of $32,305.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place all 10 items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and the agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock will lead that. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on finance this evening. The first item is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to convey city-owned property adjacent to the Brady Street Bridge over Duck Creek. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item will move on. Item number two is a resolution setting February 10, 2021, as the date for the sale of the general obligation refunding bonds series 2021A and approving the preliminary official statement. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Moving on. Item number three is a resolution establishing the interest rates for special assessments. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Alderwoman Lee?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Could we have somebody from the city staff explain this for the public?
Mallory Merritt, CFO. Yes, we do bill customers for certain services like brush and debris removal, snow removal, those types of things. After 60 days, the balance, if it's unpaid, is eligible to be assessed against the property. Historically, that had been around a 9% interest rate that was being charged, that was left over from a period of time where interest rates were just high. So after an evaluation of that, we determined that's too high, so a couple of years ago, we started setting this interest rate by resolution here. The 2% interest rate, I shared that with the council earlier tonight, there is a calculation that's used, so we tie that directly to the 10-year U.S. Treasury yield curve, round that to the nearest 1%, so that would be 1, and then add 1% to that for an incentive pay, so that's how we came up with the 2% interest rate here.
Thank you for doing that. Because 9% is very high.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Seeing no one else from council, that'll move on. And our final item is item number four, a motion approving a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the Teamsters Local 238 and the City of Davenport for the term beginning July 1, 2021 and ending June 30, 2025. Anyone from the council, I'm sorry, public wishing to address that item? Counsel? Mr. Mayor.
I just want to say thank you to the staff and to our bargaining units, our unions. This might be the quickest discussion, and for the betterment of the city, they're come together, collective bargaining and working together, and for the betterment of the city is the goal of all of us, and that is what is happening between our bargaining units and the city of Davenport, so I'm very proud of both our unions and our staff for making this happen, and the council going ahead and executing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Below on your agenda, we have purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed there for your knowledge. Alderman Peacock, would you please set the agenda?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? And that concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next area is, are there any ordinances, resolutions, motions? There are none today. Next item is, any public with business that wasn't discussed on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, ward, or address, and if you're not here, we'd love you to know, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Scott Tonaclip. I'm from the Hilltop Campus Village, the address is 122 East 15th Street. It won't take long. I want to thank everybody for giving due consideration for proposals we made relative to insertion in the CIP for a design and planning study to start to take place along the Harrison and the Brady Street corridors. We're very hopeful that it can be inserted in the next fiscal or the fiscal year after, and we are pledged and prepared to raise a balance of funds as per that amount. I don't need to tell anybody how important Harrison and Brady is to the entire city for this, and we're looking forward to being able to have something put together and help the city drive it and include, of course, the Iowa Department of Transportation in that, because these are both state highway projects. We cannot go forward with any contemplated improvements without that input. So much obliged for your advocacy, and we look forward to having it inserted in the CIP. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me, Mayor Mattson.
Okay, well, you're still talking, so continue.
Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to mention, there was a woman who had to leave, her name is Bridget Dodge, and she is the proprietor of Main Street Coffee, which is just north of Locust. She was here as a co-advocate. I don't want you to think I'm just yelling up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. Okay. So this is a plan that I showed briefly last week, and I still can't get into any detail at this point, but...
Mr. Handel, I know we know who you are, but if you could say for the record...
Bill Handel, 1514 West Hyde.
Thank you.
Fourth Ward. Okay, so what I want to do is to contrast these two plans. The visionary plan that's being accepted today is a tenure plan, but the plan that I'm looking at is something perhaps couldn't be effectuated probably within 25 years, and maybe not even 50 years, but long run, I think it'd be, you know, make our city much more enjoyable for our residents and much more attractive to visitors to our city. And the overall scheme of this is creation of a green belt parallel with River Drive and including some of River Drive between the two bridges, and extension of the green belt up to Fifth Street from the river. But I also have other features of it that I've got in here that I... Let me just go through these items, because I'll be able to send you this plan with some more information later, but my riverfront plan is something, you know, you've heard the old expression, "KISS," which is keep it stupidly simple. So my riverfront plan is stupidly simple. Rather than this contorted thing that's shown right here, the plan that I have retains what we have, it enhances things that we have, and it actually creates something we used to have, which was the incline, the two-block incline between Perry Street and Main Street, which was, of course, Main Street landing. So by excavating that area and essentially recreating the brick-lined incline and steamboat landing between that area, we've got essentially a tourist attraction that nobody else in the country has, or no one else in a city the size has, because it'll allow people to go, you're not looking through the, the railings are down to the river, you actually can walk up to the river, you can splash in, just like we can in that 60-foot... You can splash in, just like we can in that 60-foot width that we have right now. It'd be two feet wide, be able to appreciate the majesty of our river in a way that you currently can. And the river is our biggest asset, and the downtown plan is one thing, but it's the downtown, and that's separate from our river. And so what I'm showing right, well, I was going to go through the whole thing, but let me just tell you about these features. I've got an extension of the Skybridge line, which is, becomes essentially the landing for our ferry to Rock Island and our downstream river, Talcat boats. And I've got it building to one side of that line, rather than the current plan, which is some big blob at the end of the Skybridge, treating our Skybridge like some kind of a Des Moines skywalk. I'm pushing it to the side. So this line that's so strong and was shown on the River Vision Plans is maintained. Anyway, what this does, what's causing this, the possibility of this greenway is by essentially redirecting U.S. 67 traffic from Third Street all the way to Gaines Street. I mean, 67 goes down across the Central Bridge anyway. So with the rehabbing of Third and Fourth Street to one, from one ways to two ways, we'll have the option of directing that traffic over. We've got the 61 traffic going up, so then from Brady Street on, over, it frees up that whole area that can be a green path for our visitors coming in from the Viking boats to experience. I think that's something that'd be unforgettable. If you're from, in two years, we'll have people from Europe that have never even heard of Davenport. They'll be coming down, and they'll say, "What a charming city," because they'll see that it's got a plan in place for creating this green space, giving them the river. We currently don't have it on the plan that the downtown partnership provided. I'd like to have people consider that. But I've got other options on here, too. The, I'll talk about it later. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello? I'm not 100% sure if this is going to work. I'm not very tech savvy, but I'm going to try to make this work. My name, I go by Funniana Reitzer, because what I'm going to talk today about is copicide.
Ma'am, your ward, address, and where are you from?
63rd Street, and I have lived in the Quad Cities since I have been, sorry, that's part of it, since I have been 10 years old. Habitat for Humanity built my mother a home, partnered a while ago. I have been a member of food assistance. I currently will be able to buy a home next year after my lease is up with Section 8 housing. I utilize green space. I fish at the river. I love to pull her punch, but I'm nonviolent. I am a scary cat. I call 911, and cops come. I even have to call them because I thought I had a ghost in my house. There is no money here for people who want to commit copicide in our community. We have resources. We are college. We are military. We are family, community. They will not attack our status, traditional cook system. They will not ask for our money. We do not have it for them. They will not stop our camera. They will not tell us our cops are racist. We are interracial. We are family. Our skin color does not matter in the Quad Cities, and we love our cops. We need a memorial for the ones that have died. We need a memorial for the normal citizen. We cannot let them come here. They protested us. Sorry, Funniana. September 22nd, Black Lives Matter protested all parts and said that we are racist. We are not. We are interracial. That sent out a negative beacon that says, "Here's some money." We will not, because I will be there. I have already said to our Attorney General, if you need me, please call, because this is what's happening. They are killing our innocent cops, and innocent people are getting killed in the process as well. There is a setup. Do not fall for it. Because I have an education, and I use resources. And yes, I have a man that I love, and I asked him to marry me, and he told me no, because still, I love him, but that will not stop me. You gave me an education. You gave me resources. You gave me soap to wash my vagina, and still, I thank God I live in the Quad Cities, and I thank God for the cops that won, the police, the firemen, and everyone that comes to my aid when I fight. Oh, my God, I can't fight. This is against my religion. They're trying to hurt me. Cops come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Ms. Spiegel, city administrator, anything? There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a safe weekend.